We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:04. We're gonna rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ellis, could you take attendance?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hira Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lansley?
Hello.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strange?
Here.
Okay. Any view of the agenda, any additions to the agenda? Anything you need to add to the agenda?
Uh, no additions. Welcome to our September meeting. And we look forward to have a presentation from Questar III and also some new hires in our audience as well, so an exciting night for us.
Okay, thank you. 1.3, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Page one, August 24th, 2017. Someone to make a motion?
A motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion?
I had one edit that I forgot to give you, Sharon. On 3.8, it says approve B. Amanda Rich.
Oh, yep.
I don't think she's the...
Yep.
And it reads that another time, too.
Okay.
Thanks.
The one and only.
There is only one.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? 1.4, acceptance of financial reports. We have three. The Internal Claims Auditors Report from August 2017, the Monthly Treasurers Report, budget transfers, June, July, and August of 2017, and the Extra Classroom Quarterly Report. Anyone to make a motion?
All motion.
Second?
Any questions or discussion? Anything left?
Just one part. Mrs. Angressano could not be with us tonight, but she does send her regards, but this captures the summer and also our October meeting will consist of our external auditor, Scott Pruser, and the audit committee, so a full encompassing picture of the financial landscape.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Okay. 1.5, approved building use. We have three. Boy Scout Troop 502, Girl Scout Troop 1314, and Girl Scout Troop 1511. Anyone to make a motion?
Motion.
A second.
Any questions, discussion?
I just have one question. On the, the Boy Scout one does not show insurance, do we...
I do have their insurance, yes.
Anything else? All those in favor? Aye. All those against? 1.6, visitors and communication. A, communications to the board. I have not received anything. Have you, Sharon? No? Anybody? No? Okay. Then B, opportunity for the public to be heard. Anybody signed up for...
I have Mr. Jaeger.
Mr. Jaeger?
Good evening. Carver Jaeger, Whitefield Road, Lansley. A couple questions, actually. There's an article in the paper here on July 27th, Times. And it mentions in here, the average cost to educate a child in New York State has roughly, well, not roughly, a state's... Where are we here? Yeah, Mark, I've never looked. It's, uh... Twenty-one thousand, uh... Seven hundred and sixty-three dollars or something like that. Wait a minute, yeah. Twenty-one thousand, two hundred and six dollars per pupil. Anybody want to get in this room? Or, um, want to guess what it costs to educate a child in this building? Less, more? Anyone want to take a shot?
Well, this is more, more for comment than question.
Questions or questions today?
How about if you just tell us?
You think it's more or less?
How about if you just tell us so we can move on?
Pardon?
How about if you tell us the answer?
Well, I want to, you guys are on the board. This is something I would think that you would have a feeling of. You're spending the taxpayers' money, but you don't know what you're spending it for? Or how much you're spending? Or what? Well, the obvious answer for that question, to me, is you don't. Now, I'll tell you, it's more. Anyone say or think it's not? This is terrible. You're spending our money and you don't know why. Why do you think it's more? Because you don't know how to run a budget. That's very obvious and simple. Now, the question is, let's reference the town of North Green Bush. Ten years now. Have no tax increase. Now, I understand the school is a little different, so on and so forth, but it can't be said. But why? There's no more students in the school now than there was ten years ago. Give or take ten, maybe. But why, what's... You know, I'll tell you one thing, teacher salaries are going up a lot. How many people here, in the last five years, have had an increase in their salary of twenty percent? Well, that question is none, but that's the average increase of teacher salaries in this school district. Now, the question is, why? Are the kids ten percent smarter? Five percent smarter? Are they any smarter? Or are they dumber? I have to challenge our superintendent, who's new, that I think this is something that needs guidance on and leadership. Now that you're here, now that you've heard it, maybe it will take some leadership. You don't want to give, oh, it's a nice teacher, they're a nice teacher, they're a nice person, they don't bother my little child, they don't bother my Mary or my Johnny, so I'll give them a raise. Why? Why do they hurt it? Is the education level in this school any better than it was ten years ago? I'll guess none of you know. Okay. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know how it would fit in with New York State's average either. But I know the salaries are going up, so why didn't the education go up? Teachers got a lot more tools to work with now than they did ten years ago. So they're getting extra tools, we're not getting smarter kids. But anyway, that's a start for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. He was the only one who signed up, Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. 2.0, reports to the Board of Education. 2.1, Board of Education Discussion and Reports. Like, our first one is C.S. Arch, capital project update. I know they couldn't be with us tonight because they had a prior commitment.
They could not, so I was gonna give kind of a general overview during my report, so if that's okay, I might ask us, we'll turn it over to perhaps our visitors.
That's good for you. Sure.
And I'll come back.
Sure. If you can do that, absolutely. So we'll move on to B, Dr. Gladys Cruz of Questar III.
Gladys Cruz. Good morning.
Thank you for joining us.
Nice to be here and thank you for having us again. Last year, we did not come. We had something that didn't work out, so we're glad you could be here. With me is Deputy Superintendent Harry Hadjiano and one of our board members, Ed Brooks. So what we want to do this, this evening is just give you an overview of some of the programs that you are purchasing through the BOSI's and then answer the questions that you've had submitted to us regarding some of the financial services in the BOSI's. So every year, I go out to the districts and I talk about the ongoing changing landscape in New York State. And just to give you a little bit of what that looks like in our region, in the past five years, we have seen ten new superintendents appointed. And we have twenty-three districts. Eighty-seven new board members. This past year, there were twenty-four new board members in our region. Ten new business officials, twelve new CSE chairs, fifty-four new principals and assistant principals, twenty new school counselors, and eighteen new school librarians. Just to give you a sense of how much turnover there is and how much change there is in our region. In our BOSI's, so, we have a couple of new appointments and changes. Trini Hernandez, she is the Director of the Regional Bilingual Educational Resource Network, and that is a grant, a contract funded by this New York State Education Department, and it is to service districts with English language learning. So we provide professional development at no charge to districts that have English language learning. We have a new Director of School Library Services, Carrie Birch, and we have some new assignments in two of our principals. Danielle Rabelard is now at the George Washington School, and Chris Martel is at the Academy and Rensselaer Education Center. So you probably heard about the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and that is the, um, the law that replaces the No Child Left Behind. And the plan for New York State was submitted to the U.S. Department of Education last week. So they have sixty day, ninety days to give a response to the New York State Education Department, and if there are any changes needed, then the State Education Department has thirty days to respond. Probably we'll see some changes and some, you know, requirements for changes, we'll see, but that is, I think, in a good place. The governor approved it, and it's off to the federal. Another changes that have taken place just recently is the Board of Regions, just last week, adopted the new math, ELA, and arts standards. Three sets of standards. So that means that for elementary teachers, they'll be have, they'll have a lot of changes because they teach all of the subjects. There have been two years of collaborative work to ensure that the New York State ELA and math standards are the best standards for our students. There were over one hundred and thirty educators and parents who worked to make recommendations on those standards. And those are the standards, the next generation learning standards for ELA and mathematics are replacing the Common Core learning standards. The Leading Edge is our framework for goal setting, innovation, and growth. We moved away from a strategic plan, which is a multi-year, and we're more focused on the year-by-year, setting goals that are short, shorter term. Last year, these were our accomplishments. We had some facility improvements in some of our buildings. We onboarded the Questar III staff to the Leading Edge. We developed some scorecards, and we monitored those over the year, and we performed some service and program reviews. So what we're doing is, on, on an annual basis, we select programs and services to review them, to make sure that they're cost-effective and they're adding value to the districts. These are our goals for this year, to develop the employee capacity, to develop new programs and services, and to improve and reevaluate existing programs and services. I want to give you the next two slides, I just want to give you a sample of what our scorecard looks like. This is a sample scorecard from Tech Valley High School, and this, this is a linear scorecard. The next example is more of a graphic scorecard. The reason I bring this to you is that the, with the ESSA, it is expected that every school will have a scorecard. So, as, as their accountability. So any parent who go up on their website, you should see a scorecard, something like this, for each of the schools in New York State. So that's upcoming. So we'll see something like this in the future. We began this process now, last year, and our staff has embraced this and are doing some nice things with the scorecard to measure their progress over time. So what programs does the Wyandotte Schools Union Free School District purchase? So, these are the programs that you currently purchase. Career and technical education mainly, Tech Valley High School, right? Students go to Tech Valley High. Special education-related services, art and education, Odyssey of the Mind, library, automation, home instruction, school improvement services, state aid planning, network systems engineers, and health and safety. The Wyandotte Skills, BOSI's aid ratio is sixty-two point four percent. Okay? So that means that every dollar you spend, the next year, you get sixty-two percent back, right? Sixty-two cents back, with the exception of the deducts. When the deducts are taken out, which are generally like salaries of over thirty thousand dollars, your, um, BOSI's aid ends up being about forty-three percent, which is, it's pretty low. Additional programs and services available are alternative aid programs, model schools, grant writing, data analysts, and central business office. And that's just an example of some of the programs. We have over two hundred and eighty programs and services in our BOSI's. And we have the largest BOSI's service in the state of New York, and that is state aid planning, and you have some questions around that. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Harry Hadjiano.
Hello. Since we weren't here last year, I want to use this opportunity to talk a little bit about an angel initiative that we are undertaking. We are going to be modernizing, you know, the Rensselaer Education Center, and what we've done last year is we developed a range of budgets using a twenty-year lease option. We share those, that information with our stakeholders, primarily our Board of Education, our superintendents, and business officials. Based on the positive feedback that we got from them, we issued an RFP. And we educated our, you know, potential proposers, what our needs are. We received four, seven different proposals from six different developers. And then we created a committee of Questar III board members, Questar III staff, and superintendents from our region to kind of review their proposals and, and select, uh... Select the, the finalist. We looked at all the proposals, we selected four developers to come in and, and be interviewed. From, from those four, we selected two, and asked them to give us their best and final offers. VIP structure was, was selected as a finalist, contingent upon successfully incorporating a result. Now, word, well, you know, when, for this new facility, we want to make sure that it was easily accessible by all of our districts, all of our components. We want it to be off the I-90 corridor. And also, we wanted to have a special ed component into them, so we can open up opportunities of career technical education for children with special needs, so we admire it together. Where, where are we today? Fortunately, we weren't able to reach an agreement on, on the lease terms. We are conjoining, eh, the committee of our stakeholders to evaluate our various options. We have talked to our board last week, we have a superintendent meeting tomorrow, and we're talking to them. And what I will assure you is that the Board of Education and also the leadership team is committed in getting a new state-of-the-art facility for the, for the children. So we'll keep you posted as we have more news. Now, I also want to highlight a couple of new programs that we are offering. One of them is partnership between businesses and education. And by businesses, I mean for-profit entities, non-for-profit, and government entities. Businesses, they, they are very concerned about the projected workforce development issues. We talk to many business owners, what they will tell you is they're, they're having a really hard time finding qualified people to take on jobs. School districts also want to make sure that they teach in a way that the children can make the connection between theory and actually how that theory is being applied in the workforce. So we are really the conduit to bring those, you know, the schools and the businesses together, so we can change instructional methods or change curriculum, so those, those are the stuff. So this is some of the stuff that we're doing. So at the end of the day, children will have internships at businesses, so they can get real on-hand experience in various different industries. They have opportunities to visit businesses and get an understanding of what it means to work in nanotech. I think some of the challenges is that the new upcoming professions, children don't understand what it means to be a nanoscience or, or to be a coder. They understand what it means to be a fireman or a policeman, so everyone wants to be a policeman and fireman, and those are the services, quite frankly, that, you know, are highly prescribed. You know, I mean, our law enforcement for the service, you know, we have, we have a bunch of children into those programs. However, we want to make sure that there is programs there for the, that will have very plentiful, high-paying jobs in the future for the, you know, for the children. And we, and we want to, want to make sure that we introduce them to those opportunities. Also, they have internship opportunities for teachers, so teachers can take their theoretical experience and expertise and put it into practice and make those connections. And also, they have opportunities for, for children to work at businesses and look for themselves how the business environment is out there. So, and also, you know, lastly, I want to mention that, you know, another byproduct of this work is that we're going to build bridges and connections between superintendents and, and the business world out there. Some instructional programs that we're working on, heavy equipment operators, that's teaching children how to use and operate and maintain heavy equipment, human services, that's educating and the field of work, social service work, occupational therapy, physical therapy, those are areas that are explaining for jobs, coding and robotics, you know, somebody told me, those are the bricklayers of tomorrow. Learning how to code is like learning how to lay bricks, you know, you're building things on top of each, of, 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 of a base. Health and technical services, you know, training people how to become lab technicians or EMTs. So that's what's happening on the instructional end. I know you wanted to talk about stated planning. I just wanted to, I just wanted to, to state planning in perspective. We have a very, very robust financial services department within Questar. Stated planning, it's just one component of various financial services that we are providing. You're gonna see that the ones that you see are stated next, next to them, those are statewide services. So that means that we're selling the services beyond our components, beyond our region. And Dr. Prue said that, you know, our stated planning obviously is the most subscribed service in, in, in the whole state. We have about four hundred and fifty school districts and thirty-five forces that they subscribe to that service. The next most highly subscribed service is Alcatraz 45, 75 valuation service. Basically, we have an actuarial department within our organization that does actuarial valuations for, for, for unemployment benefits. And then, we have a very popular program that we just started a year ago. If, if children with special needs cost you in excess of a certain amount, we are able to capture that cost from the state. So we go out and train the districts on how to do that. That's one option. Another option is, if they want us to do it for them, we'll do it from start to finish. You know, that's an area where we see a lot of loss of revenue from school districts. Literally, for large districts, we can walk in and recover millions of dollars for them in a very short period of time. So these are just, and also, we have a central business office. It's becoming more and more difficult to recruit business people, so basically, we have districts that outsource their business operations to us, so we're, we're doing that for them in the main office. So how do we, you know, these, these are huge business opportunities for us. And they are, they have such, they're so highly subscribed because we have districts to, to two things. Expand the pie. By expanding the pie, I mean enhance the revenue, increase the revenues, whether it's state aid or, or federal aid, we're able to bring additional money into them. So that's the one side of the equation. The other side of the equation, we do go in and look at cost and, and come up with ideas and suggestions on how to contain cost, on how to manage cost, how to manage their cost. And that's important when you, you're with a two percent tax cap environment. Now, how is it done? We do try and develop our employees' capacity. We have a lot of employees with very deep knowledge in certain areas, and we encourage them to expand their learning. And that's one of our core principles, quite frankly, learning, helping people to, to develop their expertise, that's something that's highly valued in our organization. Building a strong team. It's not about an individual, it's about the team. So it's important to us to build teams that are not only going to meet the client's expectations, but, but exceed them. So, and that's another one of our core principles of service. Lastly, we're always looking for how to do things better, how to innovate. You know, I, what I tell my people is that in the environment that we're operating right now, the days where you could increase cost by ten percent and say, okay, I'm gonna pass it along, those days are gone. So every year, we've got to see how we can do things better, cheaper, faster, and that's really our model. So we, we look at how we do things and we implement, eh, and we do. And when you put everything on together, then that's when you can have an excellent product that hundreds of districts will subscribe to. Now, since I'm here, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the administrative budget for 1718. The administrative budget is the only budget that this board votes on on an annual basis. One in April, you'll get together, all the boards get together, and one on administrative budget. The administrative budget is allocated based on what our resident weighted daily average attendance. So that's, that's, we, we take those numbers across our region, and you are, and based on your share, we, you know, we come up with the allocation percentage. Your allocation percentage is one point four percent of the total administrative cost for the bosses. So, and again, that's based on RADA, and it fluctuates, it goes up and down based on the, the RADA. Your district, when you look at the year, the RADA numbers over a long period, over a ten-year period, obviously, it's decreasing, but in the last few years, you have seen an increase in the number of students, so you're there absolutely, so your RADA is getting higher. Now, we do generate a lot of miscellaneous revenue from all these statewide services, so about fourteen percent, fifteen percent of that budget is absorbed by those statewide services, so we give you credit for that. So the net, seventy-three thousand dollars is the net amount that you're being charged before any kind of BOSI's aid. of BOSE's AIC. So, that's all that I have.
Okay. So, in terms of the financial services and stated planning, our service continues to be highly reputable and continues to grow. Wherever I go, at the state level, they always have great things to say about the financial service in Questar, too. So, you know, our program continues to grow and do well. Any questions for any board members?
I have a question and a comment. Do you know when the next-generation learning standards are effective? Are they effective now?
So, they're, they've been adopted.
Right.
And we need to start implementing them.
Okay.
So, but, but the implementation this time with the commissioner, Commissioner Ilya, naturally, she's going to come to address all the members, I presume, because those are her questions for her. But she wants to go slow. So, she's really looking.
I didn't know the dates had been set yet or not.
Yeah, there is a calendar.
Yeah.
And basically, of where, you know, where all this will fall, it's on the website that is available. But she wants to go slower in terms of implementation. So, we'll be starting in our BOCs to assist districts, both in region, regionally and at the home districts.
And on the new instructional initiatives, these are great to hear about. I was just having a conversation with somebody about all kids aren't going to go to college.
That's right.
And I don't think enough people, people always, through the years, have associated BOSE's Special Ed Services, never looking at the occupational things, the programs that are available. And so many kids could take, you know, take advantage of them, go right onto Hudson Valley, right in our own backyard, maybe. But, so I really hope that this could, I mean, we don't have a high school here, but obviously, our kids at the high school level could take advantage of some of these that fit into it.
Absolutely.
It'd be great.
And that's what we're trying to do. We know that not every student has to go to college.
Right.
And if they take, they, sometimes our students are able to graduate and get a job and get a high-paid job. So, we are working with our chambers of commerce and that business partnership that Harry spoke about. We're working to develop some videos to educate around different types of programs and what a construction program looks like today, which means that there's a lot of technology, a lot of robotics versus, when Harry said, you know, the, the bricklayer of today is the coder, because they're doing everything on computers.
Right.
And, you know, and when you see a bulldozer, there's a GPS connected to that. So, there, there's a lot of technology, robotics. So, we're, we're working with the chambers of commerce to put out some videos. And they're going to be on the chambers' website, on our website, and on the business websites. So, we're really trying to get that word out. So, thank you for your questions.
I'd like to shine a little light on your, that's not concerned, it's your interest. One program that we have developed, so, in the last year, is an emergency service dispatch program. And this was the brainchild of a instructor that we had within the BOCs. She took it upon herself to be certified and to teach this program. It's a two-year program where our students, as juniors and seniors, you know, they participate in this program, learn this, and they become, I believe, there's a certification that they're qualified to sit for. And out of high school, they can, they can go into this field on a living wage. And I, I like your interest as far as the construction technology and also your thoughts as far as not everybody goes to high school. I mean, I can't drop the back door at my high school. I graduated from that, towards the class, but I went into apprenticeship, machine chat. And I completed that. And then, the organization that I, that I apprenticed in, they put me through two years of school, put three and a half, got around, and then another, another two years at Ciena. So, that, that, that's not a bad path. And I say, and I've seen, you know, other, other graduates, there is graduates of path to college programs, cut their way through college. And other, and one other thing that I just wanted to focus on, you know, your folks have a, you have a choice where your children go after eighth grade. And one of the choices I think is better, and we're very, very happy with that, is Tech Valley High School. And something that has just been completed, the incoming, the incoming freshman this year into Tech Valley, Valley will have the ability to not only complete their coursework for their high school diploma, given, you know, how motivated they are, they will have the opportunity to graduate in four years from Tech Valley, in a high school degree and two years of associate's degree at no, no cost.
No additional cost.
So, that's, so I'm, I'm, I'm working for Tech Valley, and so I'm, I'm very happy to be able to tell you that. So, I, that's, I better clarify, I know we've worked on doing all these people a good work. I always, I kept my speeches short at graduation.
It used to be the president would become a trained school board, and then he served for, he was serving for 10 years now at Wesley High, 10 years plus.
Well, he was 41.
Yeah.
He was in here, and I guess he was in there.
Same here, yeah.
So, he was in there.
Yeah, that, that, you know, being able to graduate with that associate's degree, that's something that we're, we've been working on, and the principal at Tech Valley has been working on. And what he's been doing is being able to get the college and the high school and get all the students' credits transcribed, transcribed so that they can graduate. So, it's, you know, it's a very different model, what we're doing there. Very different because you hear about PTECs across New York State, but the PTEC model is just six-year. And we get, you know, those schools get funding from, from the state. This is, this would happen in the four-year students have access to completing that associate's, so it's going to be very unique. We'll tell you how that goes in full.
Look forward.
So, thank you again. I look forward to seeing you at our Saturday events. We have two great events coming up this year. We have the commissioner coming in October. And then, we have Mike Ford and the superintendent of the year from InfraD, Dr. Label, coming in, it's January 17th.
We'll see him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Sharon talks to the board.
Oh, okay.
Did they make it?
Okay. Okay.
Sharon will have to, he'll probably go.
Great program.
Yes, very wonderful program. Girls that they came to talk to us.
The ones that they already have.
I don't know if they do, did you do it a hundred?
Hmm.
He looks like he's done by night.
Yeah. Oh.
For the prickers.
But it's called Whiteview Road.
While we're waiting for Dr. Rader to come back, Dr. Yodis, could you give your?
Yeah, sure. First of all. So, we are off to a great start. It can't, you know, it's hard to believe, it's only been three weeks, it feels like. We've been here, we're a well-oiled machine. We had two days of conference days, which were wonderful, in August. Just to tell you a little bit about what we worked on, we're involved with Questar in doing these instructional rounds. So, many of our teachers were trained last year on instructional rounds. So, you have a two-day training, and then Questar is trying to facilitate teams of 15 to 20 educators to go out and look to take site visits. So, you're going into different schools, you're taking a team of folks, and you're looking at classrooms K-12. And we are looking to host an instructional rounds visit here. So, what we worked on, part of the training was to identify a problem of practice here, which was really eye-opening for a lot of folks when you look at all your speciality teachers, all your grade levels. And so, that conference day really started to brainstorm, what is it that Gardner Dickinson needs to overcome to get our kids to the next level? Like, what is it that's, what's the obstacle? And it's called a problem of practice. So, we continued this work yesterday during our first faculty meeting and looking at the ideas that we had as, you know, a staff of almost 40, down to seven groups, down to one problem of practice. So, we've been working on that. So, some of that that came to light is, you know, thinking maybe we don't have as much rigor, as much differentiation. Some of our writing prompts in different grade levels and different areas are weak. So, we're developing one problem of practice. We're hoping to host a visit here that 15 to 20 educators from the capital region, with Gladys leading this charge, going to come here and go through our rooms, and they go everywhere. We'll have people in PE, in music, in art, in middle school, in kindergarten, and they're looking at whatever we identify as an issue. So, if it's writing, that's what it is. And then, they leave, they collect data all day long, and then leave us piles and piles of sticky notes and data saying, "This is what we saw throughout your building," perhaps. And then, they make some recommendations. Everything's confidential, the educators, so on one, the folks that are coming in to look certainly get an eye-opening, they see lots of different practices and things that they might try. So, when we take a team to other districts, there's a lot of great stuff that we bring back, ideas that we see. But then, when they come to visit us, that recommendation and that observation is very powerful. So, we're excited to start this year as looking at other districts and then having them come and give us some feedback on what we're doing here. So, that was a great two opening days. And yesterday, again, our first faculty meeting really finished that work in looking at a problem of practice. We have whole school welcome back assembly. We are excited that we have 38 new students that showed up on our door over the summer, which is just amazing. So, we, we got to celebrate and welcome everybody back, but welcome those 38 beautiful new students. Our students are doing well transitioning to classrooms, and so are our teachers. Several teachers have been moved about, and that has just been wonderful. A year to shake it up, mix it up, and we're having a lot of fun. And everybody's very comfortable and very excited into various new positions. K-5 and 6, 8 open houses went extremely well, very well attended. I have to say, in my six years here, I, just what a wonderful turnout, especially in the middle school where parents don't always seem to come out because, you know, they've heard this spiel so many times. But it was set up a little bit different so parents could go around and spend 10 minutes at each, just following their child's schedule, a lot of positive feedback. So, open houses were great. Assessments, although it's been three weeks, we've been assessing, assessing, assessing as we do every September. One of the exciting things that happened today was looking at all of that data. The assessments were done. Stephanie Carbone did an amazing job getting 384 students assessed in the LA and MAC over the three weeks, starting day two. So, that gave us a lot of great information. Today, we spent the entire day, and tomorrow will be the second day of meeting with groups of teachers and talking about every single student, which is great because I see all of you and your kids, and, you know, I've talked about each one of your kids and grandkids, and it's amazing already what we've learned from this new data that we've taken over the few weeks. I'm very excited, I'm not going to, that's fun, I'll come to you with some better numbers. But I think all the interventions, all the things that we put in place for the younger grades last year, I am going to be able to tell you that I think our remedial numbers have dropped, the interventions, all that we've been doing, the books, all of the work we gave to the children, we see very little summer regression. So, I am very, very excited that the kids are ready to start where they left off and not having to go back and, you know, reteach for a few months to deal with that summer regression. So, again, it's preliminary, but I'm very excited to see a lot of great results today. So, again, we'll continue that work tomorrow. And then, the next steps will be meeting with the teachers in specific grade levels to go over the results from New York State, the results from NWEA, and really drill down to look at the specific goals and levels that each child is at. So, whether they need an enriching program, whether they need differentiating, whether they need remediation, we're going to be able to really provide that with a lot of the data and starting points. So, it's been a very busy few weeks, but very exciting. And I am having a principal chat Monday, 5:00 to 6:30, if anybody wants to come in the library and hear about the basics. We have a lot of new parents, so I thought it might be a good opportunity to ask a lot of the basic questions and, that, that's it.
Good, thank you. I think you had a couple of fighters on the table.
Yeah.
Two?
I didn't want to steal Dr. Rader's thunder with the phone.
I prefer to just.
Were you even reporting on that?
There were two, so thank you for letting me say that, that's good.
He's a fighter guy.
Okay.
So, why don't we double back to the CSRCH Capital Project update?
Sure. So, if I may go back, just a little update. CSRCH typically reports every other month, it gives us, I should say, the general public as well, a general overview of the project. Like, if you recall, in August, they came with some photos, some financial status reports, milestone tables, things of that nature. Internally, we do meetings every two weeks as what's called an OACM, the Owner Architect and Structure Manager Meetings, where I sit, the architects, administration, building staff, people that want to attend those meetings, of course, that are within the staff. So, just give, basically, the updates that I can provide you are basically what you might see from Whiteview Road. So, I encourage you, if you've been on Whiteview Road and can look up at this point, you'll see the retaining walls have been built, and actually, the foundation footings have been poured as of some, as of today, the rest of the work we finish tomorrow. So, really, we did a little tour at the beginning of the meeting, the board members at 6:30. So, you're starting to see the outside start to look like the, the construction. Most of the work over the summers I reported was more internal pieces that might not have been as visible, you know, rewiring the pieces, adding new lighting, things that might not be as glamorous, so to speak. But the outside of the building is starting to kind of look like an outside of an addition that's going to happen. So, the goal being, so it's actually there. So, what you'll start to see over the next couple, so October, CSRCH and the team will join us to kind of give us a true re-evaluation of the milestone schedule of kind of what it will be. We are still on schedule, which again, is the idea of turning over occupancy to us in the April-May area, which again, is still perfect because that's plenty of time for the fall opening, so it's not a matter of like, we need the building by a certain piece. Our goal, of course, I should say our goal, but our standard is that we will be using that new stage to walk across for this class. So, we're not even going to say our goal because that implies there might, we're just going to go, it's just going to happen. Okay, so everything's going to happen, even down to pieces, if, to put your mind at ease, the stage is here, we have it delivered, or it's going to be delivered on Monday, just we have to find a place to put it. So, we have evident pieces, we did pre-buy it, so it's going to be a good time. If I may also report out two pieces that are, that I don't think have been given a lot of attention as much within the building, but I would encourage you also to check out our social media. One for a piece, I'm not just trying to promote my own Twitter page, but really, I'd like to get up to 1,000 followers, is I do photograph every piece each day that has changed. So, do check out some kind of live pieces. But some pieces within the current campus that you might not have seen, or maybe you've heard from your children, are the restructuring of the kitchen, which is, you'll see a video that's on our Facebook page right now. It's a video features Loriauti, our director of food service, our new, it's, it's, our Jason McCord, our specialist, made a wonderful one-and-a-half-minute piece, really kind of captures, we restructured, restructured the components in the cafeteria, but also added a new steam, a new heating table and a frost table, which is nice. So, it's hot and cold, everything's up to temperature, it displays beautiful, it's very appealing to children and very user-friendly to children as well in terms of how the children move throughout the lunch line. So, that's one piece. Also, some internal lighting, the room that probably pops the most besides the computer lab, where you'll see some new lighting that looks more like this, is the gymnasium. So, while the gym was not redone, the lighting is fantastic, the floor has been varnished, it looks wonderful. And of course, it just kind of showcases, and of the blower solutions that we did in lieu of adding the AC have been fantastic. The phys ed teachers and the students have noticed, it's quieter, the air is moving, it looks like, like it was a new addition that was just completed. So, it's, the work that's been done internally, besides things you can't see with the ceiling tiles, has been complete. But I will say, that's also a plus because if you were to walk through this building, you wouldn't, over the summer, you'd know we were under construction if you were here over the summer. But now, you would not know unless you opened the door and walked down to the addition, or the future addition, that we were under construction, because everything was put back very nicely. So, it's been a very smooth process, but we'll have some more logistics as to when steel will be put up, when we can expect the kind of structure at the October meeting. And the goal is to have the steel in place by November, December, in that range, and to be fully enclosed before the real winter comes that we can really begin to work in there. So, very exciting.
Good.
Going along with that, if I may, one of the pieces that also, some of the kind of, I would call it the hidden important pieces, is part of the capital project that the voters approved back in 2014 was infrastructure updates. That was to network cables, wireless router connections. But now you would not know unless you opened the door and walked down to the addition, or the future addition, that we were under construction, because everything was put back very nicely. So it's been a very smooth process, but we'll have some more logistics as to when steel will be put up, when we can expect the kind of structure at the October meeting. And the goal is to have the steel in place by November, December, in that range, and to be fully enclosed before the real winter comes, that we can really begin to work in there. So very exciting. Going along with that, if I may, one of the pieces that also, some of the kind of, I would call it the hidden important pieces, is part of the capital project that the voters approved back in 2014 was infrastructure updates. That was to network cables, wireless router connections, new security cameras, and new phone systems. Those things were put into the project originally as the 2014, when we were going to redo the campus as well. What we were going to do with that as well was tap into our Smart Schools money, which you might have heard over the past couple of years, that was a big Cuomo initiative, was basically each school was allocated a certain amount of Smart Schools money, it was relative to size. So in this case, Wyandotte Skills Unit Free School District was given $237,300, so it's 237 and change, if you will, allocated purely for technological upgrades. And there's basically six components to that. So that was always included as part of the project, but part of accessing that resource is that we do have to present to the public right now what we're going to use that money for, which basically, you approved as voters in 14, but basically, we're going to basically reallocate that money from the state and use it towards things that we want to do in the project. Basically, that money frees up money in the project to other things that are not related to technology. So if I may, and I have, and I believe Sharon, if there, people do want copies, we can certainly make that, we do a brief PowerPoint that basically, I'm just going to kind of go over, because really, it's not anything new outside of the project's scope, it's basically how we're going to spend that allocation. What the state requires is that you present to the public how you're going to spend that money, wait 30 days for public comments, so this presentation will be on the website, and I say presentation, it's pretty pro forma. And then after that 30 days, we are allowed to submit to the state for approval. Once we get approval, then we can spend the money and then get reimbursed for it. So it's a very prescriptive process, meaning you couldn't just say, you can't be reimbursed for things you've already done. So a lot of schools have made the mistake of, they put in new security cameras and then gone to the state and said, we want to use our Smart School money for that, and it's been, nope, you didn't seek approval, you didn't do the formal presentation, even if it's very warranted. So we're just making sure we're following by the book, that basically, even though we discussed this in previous capital improvement pieces, we want to make sure that we at least follow the submission rules. So the Smart School Initiative, 237, 182, I'm sorry, so it really was $237,000 and $182, is what we've been allocated from the state. But in order to access that, as I said, we have to kind of showcase to the public what we're doing there. There are six areas that you can spend the money on. They include everything from classroom networking to the removal of mobile units, classrooms, schools that have like mobile trailers that they're using for classrooms, like, you know, portable classrooms. The money can be used for that as well. It can also be used for the construction of pre-K classrooms specifically, but we felt it was better to use it for things, because $237,000 is hard to quantify, is that half of a floor in a room, is that one part of a cabinet? So really, that amount was perfect for some of the internal mechanisms we already have. So based on that, those six categories, and the submission process of basically submitting to the public what we're going to use that money for, asking the state permission to use that money, spending, getting reimbursed, this was formed, of course, the original bond through a committee. So part of the requirements are our technology committee, we have a standing technology committee in the building, but as you know, the capital product, back when it was first designed, was built with community stakeholders, what does the school need? And that's when all the designs came forward, of people, you know, from the various parts of the community showcased or featured what they wanted out of a construction project. So that being said, what we're planning on doing with our allocation, and also another piece that you should be aware of, is the money does not go away. So the money was, has been available since about 2015, it's not going away, it's been guaranteed not to go away. So meaning, if you don't spend it all, it's not like it's a use it or lose it kind of piece. So you'll see, of the 237, 182 that we've been allocated from the state, we have two proposals that we're submitting, that we plan to submit if, after the 30 days, we receive that motion, which we will, that we want to use that for. So basically, the first proposal is to upgrade the district wireless and hardwired network infrastructure to support increased demand from additional personal devices and security products. And that's valued at about $75,722. So using estimates from technology outsourced companies, we have figured that the wireless routers you're seeing in the building, we want to put them in every spot, the cabling was already part of the project, but to get those actual routers, those round disks that you see, we want to increase the access, because as you know, increased wireless devices plus personal devices that every student and faculty member, staff member, even community member probably is carrying, to access secure wireless network, it does draw from the network, so we want to increase that wireless access. So that's valued at about $75,722. That's what we're going to propose that the state allows us to spend that money on. The other piece is probably the most different, because we've had wireless access, you'll see some points that are there, is to upgrade the district's security system by adding devices such as cameras and additional video storage to provide a safe district learning environment, and to upgrade the district communication system to provide reliable communication in emergency situations. So that is valued at $119,744. So what that would do is basically, that would allow us, and when you do submit to the state, you also submit an itemized list. So it's not just submitting this basic line, you would submit one router at X amount of dollars times 40 routers equals this, labor to install equals this. So we price it down to the penny, and that's when we use our consult from CSRCH to make those numbers very accurate. And the state checks those two to make sure you're not, you truly are allocating appropriate amounts. That's why we really want to do this right. This basically includes the upgrade of our security system. As you know, our cameras that we currently had, or I should say, as you know, you might know, were coax-based, they basically recorded onto a DVD, and basically, they lasted for seven days, and then the material went away. And they can only be accessed through the main office. So we had multiple camera points throughout inside the building and outside, but you had to go to the main office to watch footage, you'd have to rewind, and if something happened eight days ago, you missed it, it just, the memory couldn't support it. This will allow us to not only increase our number of cameras, both externally and internally within the hallways, but also to access those cameras from any secure location, meaning from home, from a different computer, and also it backs up for a very, I'm not going to say an infinite amount of time, but much more than eight days on a server. So basically, if I were at home, and something were going on, and we wanted to check something out, or even in an emergency situation, if the police needed to access the internal, what's going on in the building, but not be at the main office, they certainly could do that. So that's basically using the network to support the cameras rather than kind of coax cable, kind of old-school cameras that are there. The other piece is to use a voice-over IP phone system. Right now, we use a copper-based, Verizon brings the line in, Cornerstone Communications runs the wires to the different phones in the rooms. It's a pretty outdated system, a voice-over IP system, as a lot of you are probably familiar with in other schools, and perhaps at work. It basically uses the internet and ethernet to support phone calls. And again, that allows inner-room calling, and also, it's a much more reliable system, it's not relying on copper wiring or Verizon in those pieces. So the phone devices themselves, I mean, each phone has a pretty significant value, I think each phone is valued at about $350, but again, that phone does a lot more than just, just ringing. It obviously allows you to connect, to record, things like that. So that's where that $119,744 comes from. So as you'll notice, if you add those two numbers together, we still have a little bit of money left over. The point being, I think it's about $37,000. The point is, we can access that at any other time for that. So either A, if the costs go up, it gives us some padding, or B, if we decided down the road we needed to add something else, we still have that cushion, it doesn't go away. So the next steps are basically, I make the recommendation to the board, and though we've discussed, I just want to underscore, this will be on the website, so it kind of outlines generally what we would spend that money on that is allocated. After 30 days, the board will be requested to make a formal motion to basically allow submission to the state to really encumber that money. And again, the sooner that process works, the sooner we can get those things installed and working for our school. So that is our Smart Schools presentation. Questions? Well, thank you. So you'll see on the agenda, there is a formal motion, that is a very, it's a very canned language, but that's basically what the state requires, if the board authorizes the district that they've done their preliminary proposals, that in 30 days, again, this is all checked by the state too, we've heard of schools that the state has gone back and checked if it's not been 30 days, but even like 25, they've rejected the proposal, and they've got to start from scratch. So basically, we just want to make sure that everything's by the book, so pardon the sterility, but it is just the way it works.
Good. That was yours, printout report?
It was. I feel like Dr. Yotis saw a lot of the flashier things, so I, besides the fire drills, which I think are important, we did do two. To just underscore, I know I missed the beginning part, we had a fantastic opening of school, I will say this is my third one, but this was, is the year pizzazz and sizzle, you'll see, these are complimentary cups and lanyards, and they really kind of capture the idea that we've spent a lot of time building culture, building community, so now's the time with even moving grade levels, moving things around, people taking on new roles, we want to really put ourselves on the map. And I think we already have, but really kind of make this a year of really pizzazz and sizzle. What can we do to really bring ourselves out of that shell? The thing, we already great to be even greater. I just want to point out too, that probably was mentioned, you know, we're 387 students, that is very impressive. When I arrived through the website, I remember applying for the job, it said, the Wyandotte Skills Unit Free School District is comprised of almost 300 students, and that was in 19, or 2019, 2015, 1987, oh no. So that's a pretty significant increase. But I will say, and if I may show us off a little bit more, like a proud parent, when the Times Union was doing articles on declining enrollment, you might remember, last year, we were featured as one of the few schools where our enrollment is spiking. So Menans, who might be seeing kind of a decline, and you know, another school in our similar situation, they're at about 260, 270, so to be at 385, I bet we'll be at 400 by the end of the school year, and that's a great thing. So we've had to change that on the website to say almost 400, so that's good. But I will say, that's a nice problem to have, business is good, so.
All right, thank you. 2.4, PTA update. I see a few members of PTA.
I don't know who to look at here. Actually, although we have some new board members here that I'll introduce in a second, I'm going to just finish up talking about how we did for last school year. We ended last school year on the highest profit we've ever had. We brought in a profit of about $8,200 and some odd dollars, which was nearly $5,000 more than we made the previous year, which was more than $3,500 we made the previous year, which we were always negative the previous year before that. So talk about a bragging hand, I'm like, we're very excited about that. Mary and I, as you guys know, we've been working on how to spend that $10,000 that the PTO wanted to donate to the school, we did the long survey, it looked like people wanted outdoor equipment and some different types of things to do outside. So this summer, we met with somebody from Playground Structure, Playground Area, representative from Syracuse, and I was absolutely flabbergasted by how little we could get. So we are sort of back to the drawing board with that, so unfortunately, I don't have any very exciting news, but Tom and our, one of our new board members, Paul, is, are working together on trying to reach out to business members and community members to see if somehow we can get what we wanted, but for a cheaper cost. So unfortunately, nothing to update as of yet, if you can make that. We had a very, very, very busy end of the year. We, in June, transitioned from a PTO to the nationwide, or national level of the PTA. So we have, are, you know, eligible for all sorts of different grants and monies and funds that we were never privy to before, and I don't even really know where to begin because there's so much, but I'm sure Kyle will touch upon some things in the meeting in the future. So at the same time, we had, always had a PTO compromise, was always compromised of four board members for as long as I can remember, and we now have five, all brand new. So the entire old board has stepped down, and now we have five brand new, okay, five members. I can't, I'm so excited, they're doing such a fantastic job, and I would like to introduce our co-presidents, Nicole Herbanic and Jessica Marola. And they're going to take it from here.
Thank you, thank you, don't, don't really. I'm Nicole Herbanic, my son Grayson is in first grade, so I'm very humbled and honored that I was asked to step up and do the PTO president role, and asked that I have support, so Jess and I accepted to do it together. She's going to give you some documentation that I'm just going to quick speak about as we go through this. The conversion from the PTO to the PTA went very smoothly, and we kicked off with 52 charter members the night of our charter meeting. So that was pretty exciting. Jess and I are the co-presidents, Paul Knipka is the vice president, his daughters, he has twin daughters that are also in first grade, Megan Allen is a treasurer of her daughters in second grade, and Lisa Sternberg-Williams is our secretary, and her child is in third grade. So we are a two-year term, so we've been nominated president and vice president and resident secretary for two years. Just a couple of updates, there was a regional PTA meeting in Utica in July that Paul Knipka and Lisa Sternberg-Williams did attend, so they got to go to some leadership seminars and some informational sessions that they had regarding, I know Paul went to one that was specific to male involvement in a PTA unit, and so we were happy that we got to send two people to that. One of the things we've really been focusing on is membership, because the state PTA and national PTA really stress community involvement in your PTA unit. So Paul has been the membership chair, our vice president, he's doing a phenomenal job, and I just wanted to give you a couple of updates. We did a back-to-school social with the PTA hosted, and that went pretty good, we had a pretty good turnout, it was a beautiful day. We had a booth at the North Greymish Town Fair, and that's the first time that I know of that we've done anything like that. We had some raffles, and we were encouraging community members to sign up. We, in, we, actually, I'll skip ahead on my notes here, but at the GD Open House, we kind of inundated people as they were walking in the door, so we apologized, we were inundated, but you had to get, you had to get by us to kind of get through in to the school. And that worked out well too, because we're encouraging people that even though you're joining for membership, it's $5 membership fee, but it does not commit you to any volunteerism or obligation to do anything. Really, that money goes back into the funds that we have created, and the PTO has set such a solid example. We're working off of a lot of what they've done, and then we're just using the resources at the state level and national level to just increase that even more. During the open house, I had a conversation with a parent who had a contact, was a contact at the North Greymish Police Department. We sent them an email asking that they all consider joining our membership, so we're waiting to hear back from them. The Wyandotte Skills Teachers Association has paid at this point for all the teachers in the Wyandotte School Districts to be members of the PTA. So at, as of right now, before the teacher memberships, we are at 88 members. So with an additional about 30, because there may be some overlap, some people that joined on their own, we should be close to at least 100 memberships. So we're excited about that, it's a good start. We have our Yankee Candle fundraiser just starting, the packets went home today, the apparel sale, one of the apparel sales happened, the health fair has been scheduled, and our first PTA meeting of the year has been scheduled for Monday, October 2nd, here in the library at 7 o'clock. We're going to try and vary some of the timing of that, so that, this one's at 7 o'clock, but we might do one at 3 o'clock, so that maybe the teachers that are here would come and join us and learn some information. We're going to try and, we've been working with Dr. Yotis and Dr. Reardon to really try to get more involvement from our teachers, and do that by timing things to complement their schedules. We also have Member Hub. Member Hub was given to us by the national PTA. It's a communication software in which you can have calendars and messages and homework assignments, kind of like teachers' pages, but with extra glitches. That came out late in August, it was released to us, so we're still working through the glitches on that and everything, but we hope, Paul's been really good with that too, so we hope to have a presentation to the teachers sometime in October, and start to be able to use that, which is an added bonus that we received as being a PTA. And I think that's all I had. Thank you. Do you guys have anything? Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And it's great to see male involvement.
I agree.
When I stopped by the tent at the town fair, there was Paul and Jeff were there, and it was so great to see two dads there, it's like, yes.
And Don, he's wonderful.
Moving on, 3.0, appointments and authorizations. 3.1, approve CSE/CPSE recommendations as per attached. Motion?
A motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Hira Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.2, approve Lisa Hancock, Keith Bateman, Courtney Townsend, Mary Therese Butcher 3.2, approve Lisa Hancock, Keith Bateman, Courtney Townsend, Mary Therese Butcher for the extracurricular appointment of homework center for the 2017-18 school year as per the WTA contract.
Motion?
Second. Any questions or discussion?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.3, accept the resignation of Alfred A. Degwire III from the custodial position of, from the position of custodial worker cleaner effective 9/29/2017. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I know I'm sad to see him leave.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.4, appoint Alfred A. Degwire III to the position of working supervisor as approved through the Rensselaer County Civil Service effective September 30, 2017, at a salary of $55,600 prorated.
Motion.
Second.
We're very happy to have you back.
I was going to say, I do hope you enjoyed your time off. But if I may point out, the next, if I may say, what a testament, by the way. And you'll see, there's three gentlemen in the back, and then I look forward to introducing the other two as well when they have their moment. But if I may say, as you know, Neil Benassi is retiring and taking on a role as a school bus driver. And that's, as well, we're sad to see Neil go. He's been so positive about the district, and he's still a part of that. To see Andy rise to the role of working supervisor or director of buildings and grounds, as we know it, is a true dream come true. And he's been, Andy's done every role in this district, from substitute, began here, I believe, four years ago, Andy?
About three and a half.
About three and a half. And rose the ranks, but by truly working and doing the job along everyone else. I mean, everything from, there's no job too big or too small for Andy, and his spirit is really contagious. And so to see Andy step into this role is really, while we're so sad to see Neil go, but we're excited that he'll still be on as a bus driver, to have Andy step into this role is going to be fantastic for this district.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.5, appoint John O'Toole to the six-year probationary position of custodial worker as approved through Rensselaer County Civil Service effective September 22, at $16.50 per hour. Need a motion?
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
If I may just say, the privilege of having Andy rise to this role, as well as we spent a lot of time also reconfiguring our team, because as you know, we have some vacancies. Actually, three cores of our department is changing over to different titles or new. So the candidates that you see before you, which I think is a class act, they came to the board meeting, if I may. These are the other two gentlemen. John is sitting, well, to my left, in the Yankee shirt. John, really, Andy and I interviewed, I feel like we interviewed for days on end. I felt like finding the right matches here. So Andy and I spent a lot of time together. But really, the goal was to find the right match for GD. And the two gentlemen next to Andy are compliments to his team, and we couldn't be happier to have them join us. So John is, again, in the audience, and Mr. Palmer, who we'll talk about in a second also. But Mr. O'Toole really rose as that really key candidate. He'll be doing the night piece, the night component, and we just couldn't be happier.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Yes.
3.6. 3.6, appoint Jeffrey Palmer to the six-month probationary position of building maintenance worker as approved through Rensselaer County Civil Service effective October 2, 2017, at $18.28 per hour, plus training days prior to October 2, 2017. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
If I may also underscore, so to Andy's left is Mr. Palmer. All right, last but not least here, also, a class act to come out to a board meeting. So Mr. Palmer, you'll see during the day. So basically, you'll see Mr. Palmer during the days, and Mr. Palmer during the nights. But again, you'll sometimes see the swapping piece. But also, again, really had a very contagious spirit about him. And also, a tremendous amount of experience in private industry and the construction, roofing industry, once again, doing all, everything, from being on the roofs to supervising that crew and doing everything in between. So that really meant a lot to us, and I know he'll make a wonderful addition to the day staff.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
And if you don't mind, I'm only just, I do apologize, but actually, I did promise, Webmaster, Jason McCord, that I would take their pictures. And also, if it's okay, I'm going to give them permission to prepare for their first day and leave if they so desire. But also, I'd like to get their pictures before they, if that's okay. So we're not, we're not all leaving, just, you know, we're going to just.
So you're just going to go take a picture?
Yes, but I'm going to, I'm going to come back, and if they, if they don't, it's not their fault.
Okay.
No, I think Questar is coming back.
Someone, thank you. Might be sent over for a photo op?
We can keep going.
I may want to talk about this. I'm going to skip 3.7. We'll move to 3.8. Approve Neil Benassi as a six-month probationary bus driver at $16.88 an hour effective October 2, 2017.
Motion?
Second.
Keep going.
Any questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.9, adopt the Wyandotte Skill Union Free School Districts 2017-18 district targets and superintendent personal goals. Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
I'm just going to read them, just so people know what they are. Our school targets for 2017-18, increase team use of planning time, complete project, the capital project, look at demographics and how to best meet the needs of all students, continue to examine special education models to serve students best, and configure and complete pre-K in new instructional space. And then some personal development goals that we've come up with with Dr. Reardon. One, take on leadership roles with superintendents in Questar, measure success by progress on 2017-18 targets, and co-presenting at New York State School Boards Association Convention in October, and also have a written piece published. Those are, I think, our excellent goals.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.10, all right, this one's wordy. Whereas the Smart Schools Bond Act, the Act, was passed as part of the 2014-15 enacted state budget and was approved by voter referendum during the 14th, 2014 general election, and whereas the Act authorizes New York State to issue $2 billion in general obligation bonds to finance improved educational technology and infrastructure projects for public schools, and whereas the district was allocated $237,182 to finance improved educational technology and infrastructure projects in the district, and whereas all the monies allocated are paid out as refunds to the district upon expenditure of funds under an approved Smart Schools investment plan, and whereas the district pursuant to its allocation of funds through the Act has developed a preliminary Smart Schools investment plan to expend $119,744 for an upgrade to the video security system and classroom communication, and $75,722 to upgrade the computer network infrastructure. Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the preliminary SSIP and determined that approval of the preliminary SSIP is in the best interest of the district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the proposed preliminary SSIP to expend $119,744 for an upgrade to video security monitoring system and classroom communication, and $75,722 to upgrade the computer network infrastructure be approved. I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Any questions or discussion? I know Dr. Reardon already did his presentation on that, and this is the very formal act that we have to approve.
Mrs. Castle?
I was going to say, you could look forward to a second one in October that will basically just be in the past tense, so.
Okay.
Mrs. Castle? Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
Now, we're going to go back to 3.7. Skip it, I'm sure if you have anything to speak on it. 3.7, approve the attached agreement between the North Greenbush Common School District and the Wyandotte Skill Union Free School District for grades 2 through 8 tuition rates and kindergarten through 12 transportation rates for the 2018-19, 2019, 20, and 2020-21 school years. I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Absolutely. So as the board is aware, one of the pieces that we do is we both negotiate tuition that we spend, that's for our component high schools, and also tuition that we take in from either the general public or from Little Red or the North Greenbush Common School District. So Chris Hamill, who's the superintendent over the Little Red Schoolhouse or the North Greenbush Common School District, and I have been in negotiations. So what we agreed at is obviously because, and again, this is always one of those tricky places, because as you know, there's a lot of controversy over, oh, you know, the tax rate in North Greenbush versus Wyandotte. It's always been a topic of conversation, and it most likely always will be, based on just the way that the schools are wired. So what we've been looking for is the trend in what we've been raised in other districts. Meaning, when we send students to Columbia High School, Brittenkill, I just, as you know, the board just authorized, we did sign an agreement with East Greenbush last month to send our kids to Columbia High School, continued that for three years, and the rate was coming in at about 1% or less. So basically, they were increasing the tuition each year. But I think it started at 1.2, and then it decreased each year. So basically, the percentage went up as a decrease. So recognizing that, obviously, we do rely on them for revenue, we share services as well. Christine and I did work out an agreement where we felt 2%, which is actually higher than most districts were offering us. So again, we went with a higher percentage, recognizing that we are at also a reduced rate because we do work so collaboratively. That was something we did agree upon and felt that was fair, considering when we look at the going rates, that pretty much is actually above trend of what we're getting. Also, you'll notice, we went with the transportation. You'll see that's a very big component of our budget. You can see $306,000 and up to $313,000. That's a large component of our transportation budget, when, again, without that piece, we would still be running our buses. It would not change, it would not decrease routes. We would still be running those same buses with the same square miles. But this obviously offsets our revenue significantly. So I will say, I hate to say this, without that, we certainly would not be able to function the way we do. That is basically, if you think about it, over a quarter of a million dollars each year, basically subsidizing what we already do anyway, of running, kind of basically within those boundaries. So we do have that rate set for you. And as you notice, the rate is different from primary or, say, elementary K6 to 78, which is about, you know, anywhere up to $8,000.
Any questions?
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yeah.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
3.11, policy second reading. There's quite a few here. Can we, actually, can we combine 311 and 313?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody opposed to that? Combining 311 and 313?
Not at all.
Okay. Can you make a note of that for the minutes? Policy, 5020.3, rates of students with disabilities under Section 504. 5030, student complaints. 5100, student attendance. 5150, school admissions. 5151, homeless children. 5151R, homeless children regulation. 5162, student dismissal precautions. 5162R, student dismissal precautions regulation. 5210, student organizations. 5220, school-sponsored student expression. 5225, student personal expression. 5252, student activities fund management. 5252R, student activities fund management regulation. 5280, athletics. 5300, code of conduct. 5405, student wellness. 5410, concussion management. 5410R, concussion regulations and procedure. 5420, health student services. 5420R, student health services regulation. 5420.2, request for religious exemption for immunization. 5420.2R, request for religious exemption from immunization regulation. 5425, automated external defibrillators. 5450.1, notification of sex offenders. 5460, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in domestic setting. 5460R.1, child abuse, maltreatment, or neglect in domestic setting regulation. 5460R.2, educational neglect regulation. 5460E, educational neglect exhibit. 5500, student records. 5500R, student records regulation. 5500E.1, Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA notice regarding access to student records and student information. 5500E.2, notification of directory information designations. 5500E.3, student records exhibit, release of directory information. 5500E.4, Parents' Bill of Rights for Student Data Privacy and Security. 5550, student privacy. 5695, students and personal electronic devices. 5710, violent and disruptive incident reporting. And 4526.2, web page design and maintenance. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? And then we have first readings.
Just, just to point out, as you know, again, this has been the work of the Policy Committee. You know, the 5,000 series is very thick. Kathy did add a few little minor, which does not change first and second readings, grammatical pieces, I mean, or misspellings. It doesn't change the content of the policy. It could change the interpretation based on one more that was misspelled. So that's a good thing we found that. That's good. So basically, you can see that did not affect it, but now we have clarified children versus chili, which is still coming up.
The sentence read extensive absences due to chili. And I sent Dr. Reardon a message saying, huh? I'm glad I didn't eat any, because this must have been bad chili.
Super Bowl Sundays, Monday. Could have been messy. So we're good. So I think we're now cleaned up, and we should be ready to go.
Okay. Have you received your next series?
Believe it or not, no. We have emailed NISBA, and they have said, that's great that you're ahead. We are not, so sit tight. And we'll get to the sixth, eighth, ninth. And if you look online, you can see the pieces, six is somewhat, nothing is as long as the 5,000 series. Six, six and eight have some teeth to them. Seven and nine are almost five or six policies. That's nothing. So we're going to be in great shape. So if they can get that series, we should be ready to reconvene the Policy Committee and be ready to complete that review.
Good.
Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
2.12, second readings to removal of policies. Thank goodness this list isn't as long.
Would you like to combine those?
Yes. Yes, I would. Is anybody opposed to that? Okay. 5220, equal educational opportunities. 5220.1, sexual harassment of students. 5020.1R, sexual harassment of students regulation. 5020.2, racial harassment of students. 5020.2R, racial harassment of students regulation. 5160, student absences and abuses. 5511, reserve funds. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And just to be clear, these have all been absorbed into a different type of policy?
Absolutely. These are basically policies that are either redundant, not required, or they're cross-referenced to every other policy, so we just felt it was easier to stream down.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mrs. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Hara Kawa?
Yes.
Mr. Lanacy?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Strang?
Yes.
Okay. 4.0, informational, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be October 19, 2017, at 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM, excuse me. And 4.2, opportunity for the public to be heard. Did we have anybody?
Nobody new has signed up?
Okay. Anybody in the audience? Carl, you want a second go?
Yes.
I just want to remind you, this is comment, this isn't questions.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, well, I'll make it a comment.
Okay, good.
I'm quite sure that the amount we're charging Little Red is not the maximum allowed.
Okay.
And why we don't charge Little Red the maximum, I fail to understand because, number one, I'm tired of educating their kids, okay? We don't make any money on it, we lose money, no matter what we charge them, even if we charge them the max, we would lose money based on the fact that it's $22,000 is the average for the state, not here, okay? And that just, and one of the reasons I'll say that is, I would rather have classes for the kids that I want to pay for, i.e., our school district, have less kids in it, and not have any from another school district, for example. I would feel better if our kids would get more time, because those kids aren't paying for the time as much as they should be, whatever it is, taxes, okay? That's a good way to think about it, if you really want to think about it and protect your kids. It's one thing to help your neighbors, they're leading us, and we're letting them do it. They have done it for years. Now, I'll tell you this also, when I was on the board for the budget about 20 years ago, I was able to get it to the max, but after Hammond got here, it slowly wilted away from the max, and her only benefit is to tell her groups, hey, we're throwing them to the lions, or whatever you want to say. We're wasting money, my taxpayer money, and I want everybody here to know that, and think about it. You know, it's not a question I have, no, it's not a question, I'll make a statement, because I was involved in this a while back. Sexual harassment of students, does the dress of teachers, could the dress of teachers have an effect on students? Well, yes, it could. If you have a teacher comes in with a miniskirt and teaches 7th or 8th grade, well, there's one, two, three, four, five, I'll call us gentlemen, is, no, it's 7th and 8th grade boys, okay? My thought is, that should not be allowed. Teachers should not be allowed to wear miniskirts, and they have, because I've seen them. And I can tell you a little story that happened with Lee, I don't know if anybody wants to hear it or not, but if you do, I can tell it to you. So, anyway, that's my two little comments.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. We will, I don't think we have any requests for executive session, so we will adjourn